Well, I'll call the meeting to order. First item is the invocation by Pastor Don Tejima of the Mountain Valley Church of God. And then the pledge of allegiance will be done by Elaine Fallman. Join me in prayer, please. Father, there are times when we come before you and we just don't know what to ask for, what to do, what to say, other than the fact that we start off by honoring you and saying that we counted a great privilege to have a heavenly Father that loves us so much, to give such great plans to an area like this, and then to draw all of us to it, to support it, to live in it, to bask in the wonderful things that you have provided for us here. We thank you for these refreshing rains and snows that you have brought that helped to replenish our water table. We thank you for these of our community that have stood up to lead us, and we pray your holy guidance upon each and every one of them, to give them the wisdom that they need. Father, we thank you for these citizens who have shown delight in finding out what our town government is all about, and we celebrate their graduation tonight as they have learned more about this wonderful community that we call Prescott Valley. Now, Father, just adorn this meeting with the power of your presence. We pray your protection over our first responders, and thank you for all those that will put their lives on the line. We especially want to remember all of our veterans who have served. All gave some, and some gave all. And to those that have gave all, Lord, we pray that your hand of comfort would be upon their families. We thank you again for loving us so much. The great God of Abraham, Isaac, and Israel, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Elaine. Okay, we move on to the roll call. Diane?
Mayor?
President?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
Here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall is absent this evening. Councilmember Nye?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, next is proclamations. We'll begin with American Indian Heritage Month. Elaine Myers, Dorothy Costano, Sue Burke, Gay Plack. And you have the, Diane?
National American Indian Heritage Month, November 2015. Whereas the ASDAR Yavapai Chapter of Prescott Valley, Arizona, is sponsoring National American Indian Heritage Month in the Tri-City area during the month of November 2015, and whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by the American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and where their customs and their traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, do hereby declare November 2015 as Native American Indian Heritage Month in the town of Prescott Valley, and urge all of our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Vice Mayor, any comments?
Well, it seems to me like Native Americans should be granting us a month, and they should be celebrating us instead of the other way around. However, it is an honor to be here tonight and to present this proclamation, so thank you very much. Also, it's interesting to me that the two proclamations that we're recognizing tonight, Native American Month and Diabetes Month, there are so many Native Americans that suffer from diabetes, so it's interesting that both of those coincide, so, but thank you very much and glad to have you with us.
And all these ladies are from the nutter of the American Revolution. That means they have a heritage that goes back at least that far, and may father that they know of.
And we're just preserving our heritage by honoring our Indian nations. They were there too, fighting in the revolution probably just as much as what our forefathers Blair Griffin is to my immediate left, Sue Burke is next to her, Dorothy Costanos is next to Sue, and our special lady, she comes from Houston, Texas. She's a very sweet person, Gay Platt. And, oh, I'm Elaine Myers.
Well, thank you so much for coming up. I don't see our photographer here. I think she shot up in the back.
We'll try and get this all in the newspaper. Well, I'm sure they can all hear me. We'll try and get this in the newspaper, that we were here for a special event.
Thank you, Heidi, and thank you so much. Okay, next is the American Diabetes Month proclamation. Is Jacinta here? Did I pronounce that right? Diane, you have a proclamation?
American Diabetes Month, November 2015. Whereas in the United States, nearly 30 million people, including approximately 692,311 people in Arizona, have diabetes, a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications such as heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney disease, and amputation, and whereas an additional 86 million people in the United States are at risk for developing type 2 diabetes, and whereas recent estimates project that as many as 1 in 3 American adults will have diabetes in 2050 if current trends continue, and whereas an increase in community awareness is necessary to put a stop to the diabetes epidemic. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim November 2015 to be American Diabetes Month in the Prescott Valley, Arizona area. I encourage all Americans to recognize American Diabetes Month and be a part of the American Diabetes Association Stop Diabetes Movement to confront, fight, and most importantly, change the future of this deadly disease.
Important, stay healthy, diet, exercise.
Well, I thank you, Governor, Mayor. Diet and exercise, and be aware, and testing is important. Everyone should be tested, and everyone should stay on top of it. This is, can be, a deadly crippling disease, but it doesn't have to be. You need to stay on top of it.
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to thank the town for acknowledging diabetes. We did have our annual Step Out Walk on October 17th in Prescott at the Yavapai Indian Tribe. Rain or shine, it was raining pretty bad. Everybody still came out, so thank you for all the community's support. I encourage everyone, not only for the month of November, but to call your doctor and schedule a simple A1C test. It's a simple blood test that can save your life. There's a lot of deadly things that come with diabetes such as amputation, heart attack, so just stay on top of it. A simple blood test could change your life and prevent you from having further complications. So I appreciate it and thank you very much.
In case, thank you so much. We have a special presentation tonight. Building Board of Appeals Certificate for Service, Nicole Russell. Is Nicole here? There she is. Come on up, Nicole. Do you have any comments, Diane? We have a certificate of appreciation presented by the town of Prescott Valley to Nicole Russell in appreciation for your dedicated service on the town of Prescott Valley Building Board of Appeals, February 27, 2014, September 5, 2015. Thank you for your service and your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the town council. I'm looking forward to having an available schedule where I can serve the town again in this type of capacity. It was a good learning experience. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for your service. We appreciate it, and we, as we appreciate all of our volunteers, and it's a blessing for us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Keep up the good work. Okay, now we have a much more major event, Citizens Academy graduation. Ryan, where are you?
Ryan's not here this evening, Mr. Mayor, but if we could have council come down to congratulate the graduates. This is class number 19, and last night we had our wrap-up session, which was a great deal of fun, and let me disclose to you the top three items that you chose for the town of Prescott Valley going forward. As you know, you all weighed in on that, and class 19's number one issue identified? Any guesses? Jobs. Number one was create jobs. Any guesses on number two?
Transportation?
No. Bike paths. Bike paths was the second highest one, and number three is interesting. The third highest thing on your class list to accomplish was increase speed limits. Now, I know that our police department would be very interested in that last recommendation, but nevertheless, that's what it is. Now, with that, if we could, I'll read off your names, and Marty, if you want to take those, and come on up if you would, please, and council is eager to shake your hand, and thank you very much for your dedication of time. Thank you very much for participating in the Citizens Academy and electing to learn more about your city, to learn more about local government. We really do appreciate that, because it took a lot of your time, and you were a great class and a lot of fun. So with that, Carol Baker.
Heidi, are you going to want him to line up right here? Okay, come on up for this.
Chris Baum, Karen Blackbird, Christina Brooks, Dennis Bryden, Peggy Campbell, Edmund Corrigan, Michael Deedle, Diddle, Joanne Dooley, Jerry Ferguson, Larry Foster, Glenn Guffsterson, well, thank you, Jerry Henning, Christina Jones.
Thank you so much for all that.
Well done. Kathy Lewis, Nels Lundgren, Winnie Melton. It's my fault. Anessa Morrison, William Morrison, Rose Moser, Terry Moser, Pat Noyes, Chuck Tatro, Pam Tatro, Amanda Toddin, Lisa Van Warmer, Leann Walker, Gary Ward, and Thomas Watkins.
Thank you all for your service.
Congratulations.
I know you.
Congratulations.
Gary? Gary Ward? There you go. Thank you. Congratulations.
Made it through it.
Scoot up and face the camera. She doesn't want to take a picture of your back, so.
Between him and these, we're all pretty much.
I don't know. What are you going to do?
My class was the first time that we repeated something.
Would any of you want to make a comment? Now to celebrate, the ladies have brought in, I don't want to take a punch there, they have cookies, and we're going to reset for a few minutes so you can enjoy yourself. So we'll reset and reconvene in a few minutes. Annual Report, Parks Commission, I understand you're going to do it, so come on up.
Come on down. Door number two.
I don't know who did the book, but it looks to me like you did, somebody did a lot of work on that. Good job, whoever did it. Good evening, council and Prescott Valley. You're right, there was a lot of work on the book, but this is a second annual report, and I'm Ron Brinkman from the Parks and Rec Commission, and with me are commissioners Elaine Fallman, Pat Friar, Danny Avalos, and Michelle DeSau. And we're going to present the annual report. Michelle's going to kick off and give you some highlights. Michelle, you just got here. I didn't see you earlier.
No, I've been here for a while.
Have you? I didn't see you. That's good to see you.
So, thank you for letting us come this evening. We really appreciate it, and I know that with your agenda that you received last week, the annual report was a part of that, so we do want to take this evening to point out a few highlights, and especially express our thanks to you as a commission and to Larry and everyone involved. It's been a banner year for Parks and Rec. There've been a lot of exciting new activities that we've developed. Because of the increase in budget, which again, we very much appreciate, we've been able to acquire some new equipment to better serve this community. We've been able to do some park renovations out at Antelope Park. If you've not been out there, we highly recommend that you take a look at it, because it's a legitimate, beautiful park with great parking, beautiful structure, and new playground equipment. So it's serving our community in a way that it has never served our community, and that's really, you know, I think that's really what all of us as park commissioners are hoping to accomplish as volunteers on this commission, is to better serve our community. But specifically, if you all, if you have it with you and you'd like to follow along, please take a look at page 11, excuse me, not 11, page 15. So that's where you'll see the highlights. So these are the things that we're especially proud of accomplishing this year. One of the highlights is that we hosted the NJCAA Men's Soccer National Championship Tournament. So that brought a great amount of revenue. It brought new visitors to town, and then of course, it filled up our fields and brought them to the beautiful park, Mountain Valley Park that we've got on our, in our town. The other thing that we really wanted to highlight this year is the volunteering aspect. So there's a number right there, $29,000 is over $29,000. That's the benefit that we have seen this past year with our volunteers. It's pretty spectacular to know that our community is getting engaged in ways, much larger ways than they have in the past, and numbers like that continue to increase. We should all be really proud of that, in my opinion. One of the things that our goal is to get the community engaged, and as those numbers grow, we know that we're doing our job. The other thing to note, and this is more on a personal matter, but we do treat each other like a family, I feel, and so Jason Elmer, which you might recognize that name, he's been with the Park and Rec Department for a long time, he and his wife welcomed a little baby girl this past year into their family, so, she's adorable, by the way. So that's pretty great. Another item, slide renovation. So the Mountain Valley Park, the swimming pool is used a lot. If you've been there in the summer, you know that we have reached capacity basically every day, and so with that requires upkeep and maintenance, and so the slide was renovated last year. Very much needed to be done, and it's beautiful. It looks brand-new, basically. Theater on the Green. Have all of you been able to attend one of the events? Isn't that just gorgeous? Again, through your support, that's a phenomenal facility to bring our community together, and I know that we've had some fantastic events already, and you can be assured that the Park and Rec Commission and the department will continue to look for acts and entertainment that will continue to bring all of us together as a community. I think for me, that's really what I wanted you all to see. I want, and speaking on behalf of the commission, I just want you to know that, you know, our hearts are in this. We believe in the Park and Rec. We believe in this community. That's why we show up. That's why we do work studies. That's why we want to improve the entire recreation opportunities for this community, and so we're very excited to be a part of this. We hope that you will take a moment to look through this in detail, and then, like we do every Park and Rec Commission, express your gratitude and thanks for Brian and his crew for really supporting us as a community and bringing these opportunities to us. So, thanks, everyone.
Well, thank you, Michelle.
And Ron, you're going to take it next?
I just wanted to add to that, that as you look through the first part of this, you're going to see a lot of our community partners and a lot of businesses and people in town partner with us and do events and contribute a lot, and we really appreciate it. It makes the whole community better. So with that, I'm going to let each of the commissioners that they would like make a quick comment.
I think that you will find it very interesting that through the tournaments that we've brought into the town, we have actually made a profit for the town. This is really a wonderful thing, and it's in the tens of thousands of dollars, and we're very proud of that.
Pat?
Just want to say thank you all for inviting us to the field visit today out at what's going to be the new Glasterton Hill Trail. That's a personal passion of mine as a coach of a local mountain bike team for one of the high schools, so really looking forward to that progressing and getting to the top of the hill, and for your continued support for the commission and for the Parks and Rec Department. Couldn't do it without your support and help and obvious funding where it needs to be. Thank you.
Diane, 20 minutes.
Actually, I think we'd probably need a little bit more time to address all the exciting stuff that's actually been going on lately, and I'd like to say it's an honor and a privilege to be a part of this, to have your guys' support. Again, Brian and his staff, we can't thank them enough. Kudos to them for everything that they do for this community and helping the development and the growth for future families and current residents of this town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Before Brian makes a comment, I just want you to know that this is not just a document that comes out once a year. The information that goes into making this up is ongoing, so the department has developed a lot of tools to keep track of things throughout the year. So hopefully, in the next year, we just throw things together and have the report, but there's a lot that goes into this, not just one time. So, Brian?
Good evening, council. Commissioner Fallman indicated an item that I wanted to bring to your attention, and my apologies for not being able to make it part of this report. Some of the data was not made available to us from some of the other organizing groups out there. But council has always made it very apparent that we like to regionalize, we like to partner, we like to do a lot of those things, and I know our department does a lot of that work in which that's exactly what we try to do, and we partner in many different ways. This year, we were very successful in partnering with our youth soccer organization. We hosted two fabulous tournaments in our area. I think all of the visitors, you hear Coach Pantaleone mention this, a number of different folks that come in our community about our athletic fields and how tremendous they are in comparisons to other regions of the state, other communities within our area. And in doing so, those tournaments brought in at least 100, if not more, teams, and when you factor that in, that basically can equate anywhere between 1,000 to 1,300 people visiting with us, they're staying with us for extended periods of time, which is great, because that means they're in hotels, they're eating at restaurants, they're of course needing to pump some gas in their vehicle and doing all of those things. Some of the data that I also, that I was able to receive, that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight, is the simple fact that our sister community, the city of Prescott, our department partnered with their department to be able to host two tournaments. One was in the fiscal year for reporting, the other... One was in the fiscal year for reporting, the other occurred in our current fiscal year this year. That was the first time that's been done in the history of our two communities, so pretty exciting times. Simply, neither one community could complete the tournament, but both communities together could produce that. And I think that's a very valuable item. In total, the communities saw an estimated direct spending of over $180,000. The economic outreach impact of that reached nearly $440,000. One tournament over a three, four-day period of time. So we hosted not one, but two of those youth ladies fast pitch tournaments. We had the two youth soccer tournaments. I'll let you do the math, have some fun in regards to the value and power that we can help provide to this region and our own community as well. So thank you very much for your support. Thank you for allowing us to be able to present this to you this evening. And I appreciate everything that you're doing on behalf of our community as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the great job you're doing. Any other comments?
I think we'd be very remiss if we didn't thank all of you for your service and remind those that are watching this at home that you're volunteers and you're exemplary volunteers, and we're more than lucky to have you with your interest and your enthusiasm and your hands-on and all the time you give. Please know that we honor that and feel very fortunate to have you willing to serve in the capacities that you've chosen to serve.
Well, I too want to thank you for being such an active group. Without all the work that you put in and the sacrifices you have to make, and I know they're great over the year, we couldn't possibly function in this town, in Parks and Rec. It takes all of you and all of your efforts, and I do appreciate everything that you do. So thank you very much.
Marty?
Yeah. We are a very blessed community to have volunteers such as yourself and to have a Parks and Rec Department that is able to do the work that they do and the amount of parks that we have to give back to the community and have our children have a place to play and participate. And with everything that's going on, I mean, it's just awesome. But two things I will campaign for, and you could put down a little note somewhere. One thing I miss is handball courts. When I was in college, I was a nationally ranked player in one-wall paddleball. So I miss being able to smack a ball and hit it against the wall, and we don't have any facilities that do that. So somewhere in the future, put that in. And one item that I've been getting back from the community is they'd like to extend our pool period or perhaps get a bigger pool because it's always filling up. So just something for the future, you know, to let you plan for and prepare for. So I will keep pushing for it, and hopefully, one day, we'll get it. So, thank you. And continued great work. I really do appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you, Marty. Mary?
Yeah, you know, I picked up on the fact that you got to go up onto the hiking path that, you know, we're looking at. And it was about five years ago when I actually got to go up there and even for the thought of it. So it's wonderful today. I didn't get to go today, but it's wonderful that we're revisiting that and it's actually coming to the forefront. And you mentioning about the mountain bike riding, well, of course, we just graduated quite a group tonight. They're very enthusiastic about different things, and one of them had to be bike paths. So I'm sure they'll be ready for that one. So, thank you. You guys are a great group. I absolutely appreciate you. You are some shakers and movers. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you as well. I think one thing I take away from this is your passion. When we went up to take a look at the beginning of a trail, I think each of you have a certain perspective as far as how you play a part. And it's something that we believe really makes Parks and Recreation very successful. And as I always think is that Parks and Rec is the face of our community. So we have to make sure that we provide the resources to our community, our citizens. And I think we do in a high, you know, I think a high bar has been set. And hopefully, we can provide you the resources to continue that in the future. So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you so much. Any other comments, Ron?
No, I just want to thank you, and you know, with the council's support, we wouldn't have been able, without it, we wouldn't have been able to do these things. So thank you very much. And it's all working together. And as for that pool, you're right. If you look at the numbers in the report, a bigger pool would be a good idea one of these days.
Well, you're doing a great job, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Or a second one.
Okay, we've gone then to to comments and communications. Anyone have any comments? Rick?
Actually, I do have a couple of things. This past Saturday night, we held our Safe Halloween event at the Prescott Valley Event Center. And I think it was a success. We had 2,600 people come through there. And I want to say thank you to the crew at the Event Center. Gary Spiker and crew did a great job providing a safe place for the kids to come through. The Arizona Business League and the Early Bird Lions did a fantastic job of providing candy for the kids and an event that made it safe for all the parents to bring their kids through. So that was another great event. We've done it now for several years, and it keeps getting bigger and better every year.
And Mr. Mayor, I really need to remark that Vice Mayor Anderson really had a scary costume.
He didn't need a costume, did he? Any other comments? Mike says that wasn't a costume. Okay, no other comments. We'll move on into number 12. Matters listed on a consent agenda, these are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, including the approval of the October 15, 2015 work study, October 27, 2015 regular council meeting, and the executive session minutes. Approving a Series 7 beer and wine license for Sean's Sports Bar and Grill located at 12625 East Village Creek Boulevard. Sean Kelly, Kelly Sullivan applicant. And then approving a Series 12 license. One with Series 7 is a Series 12 restaurant liquor license. An interim permit for Sullivan Golf LLC doing business at Sean's Sports Bar and Grill located, again, at 12625 East Village Creek Boulevard. Dewey and Sean Kelly Sullivan applicant. Go on to approval of the September 24 Board Commission Selection Committee regular and executive meetings. E is approving a joint program agreement with Yavapai Community College District for joint facility usage on Mountain Valley Park Amphitheater Soccer Field. NF is approving a budget transfer from operating funds to capital funds for the repair of the Utilities Department excavator. Anyone want to pull an item, or do you want to prove it as a whole?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent. Consent agenda.
Second, anyone? Let me set this thing here. And that, everybody voted? And that passes. Six yes, no abstaining, no dissenting. Okay. With that, we're going to move on to number 13, new business. Public hearing bingo license application for two new Class A bingo licenses for the villages at Village of Lynx Creek. Leanne, do you have any comments on that?
Just briefly. Mayor, Arizona revised statute requires that we have a public meeting prior to the recommendation on a bingo license. So all I would say about that is the villages at Lynx Lake, who already have a very successful bingo program going, are requesting two new New Class A bingo licenses held at different days in different times to provide that service to some of the residents out there. I guess it's a real popular thing in that area.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? In the public hearing, Kirk, you got any comments? Okay, if there's no further comments, then we move on to number B. Consideration of recommending the approval of two new Class A bingo licenses for Villages Bingo. And with that, if there's no more questions, anybody care to make a motion or commotion or promotion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we're ready?
Motion to recommend approval of two new Class A bingo licenses for Villages Bingo. Donna Nickerson applicant by electronic vote.
Second, anyone? And again, that passes. Okay, we move on to number C. Consideration of reappointing Robert Cohen to the Military, I'm sorry, Municipal Property Corporation's Board.
Cause I military.
Rick, any comments? Vice Mayor?
No, Mayor, I just have a motion.
Okay.
Motion to reappoint Robert Cohen to the Municipal Property Corporation Board to a term with the renewal date of November 18, 2018 by electronic vote.
Second, anyone? Motion in a second. Will you set the vote? Okay, and that passes. Six yes, no dissenting. We move on to number D. Consideration of reappointing William Campbell to the Municipal Property Corporation Board. Again, any comments, Rick? Vice Mayor?
No, we discussed this, and we are recommending the motion to reappoint William Campbell to the Municipal Property Corporation Board to a term with the renewal date of November 18, 2018 by electronic vote.
Second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Give the motion in a second. Set the vote. And that passes. Okay, we've gone to number 14. General consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Any public, Kirk? Comments? Come on up, Kirk.
I'm not responsible for this.
Mary, are we in trouble?
I, I'm not, I'm not responsible for any of this.
Got to use the microphone, Kirk. Got to use the microphone.
Uh-oh, we're in trouble, if you're wondering.
Yes, I'm Mr. Mary Mallory.
You want to pull that thing down so we can hear you?
Okay, all we wanted to know is, what is a municipal property corporation board?
Okay. Larry, you want to explain that, or either one of Vice Mayor or Laura?
I just think that'll be Mr. Mallory's homework, and he can come back to us when he figures that out. Well, between the two of them, I'm sure you can figure it out. It'll be on the website, just if you need help.
Was that any help at all, Kirk?
And being consistent with call to the public, we really don't comment because it's not on the agenda. And so I would invite either of them to give me a call or stop by the office, and I will explain to them where they can find the definition of the municipal property corporation.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you for helping them.
Okay. We have one more item that everybody hates, and that's number 15. Motion to adjourn, anyone?
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And a motion?
I don't know. It went away.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the motion in a second. Will you set the vote? Seven dissenting? No, it's six yes.
We want to stay.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.